This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Ms. Little. How are you?
I'm fine. Hope you are also.
I'm doing well. Doing well. Good to be with you tonight.
Same here.
You're not going to show your face tonight?
I thought I was. I see myself.
That's all I see is myself right now.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. This is Tim Calhoun.
Good evening, Mr. Calhoun.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, here I am, Mr. Mike Drury. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, sir. We hear you loud and clear.
Good. Hope y'all are doing okay.
Fine, thank you. And you too, hopefully.
Good for you. And good evening. This is Danielle Powell.
Good evening, Danielle.
So is Powell. All right, I see you now, Ms. Little.
I know. I hadn't hit my share. I'll learn one day how to use this.
Okay. Look like it's just me and you.
Oh, just going to look at each other. Okay, that's all.
Y'all are pretty good in the rest.
But we welcome everyone else also.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Elliott.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if, when I opened up the agenda, it's not the 200 and some page document that we normally get? Was that not sent out this time?
It was. It was. You have, uh... Yeah, you have two different, uh... When you go, when you log on to the agenda, you have two different, uh... Uh, spots you can click on. One does not have all the document and one has the other. One have, have all of them.
Well, when I click on the agenda... Uh, maybe this, I'm sorry, let me...
It's two separate ones. It should be one, it should be one for the, for the board members that have all the documentation on it. They have all the other documents.
I don't see that one. That's why I was asking. I got it. I got it.
All right, very good. Do we have Mr. Rollins on, on the call tonight? Haven't seen Ms. Rollins come on yet. Ms. Chapman, are you there?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived for us to open up our regular scheduled meeting, first Thursday of the month of October, October 1st, 2020. This, a meeting is now officially called to order, and we're going to ask now, Ms. Powell, our legal representative, would give us our opening statement in reference to our virtual meeting.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and all who are, um... Attending this evening. This meeting is, um, being held electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has made it unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. This meeting is convening by go-to meetings as posted on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. At this time, we are elated that we have Reverend Spencer Logan that's going to be coming forward to us with our invocation on tonight. So we ask if he's here, if he would chime in now and lead us in our invocation of prayer.
Uh, yes, I'm here. Uh, to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, to the Honorable Chair, and to the board, and to all those attending. Let us pray. So first, we want to take this time to say thank you for your love, for your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for the leadership you have given Surrey County in such a time like this during this pandemic. Though we ask you to continue to lead in God, as decisions have to be made for the well-being of our community. This we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. We thank Reverend Logan for leading us in our invocation, and at this time, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. We're going to ask now if Mrs. Little, if she would come and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance form tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member Ms. Little. Uh, at this time, uh, we have before us, our board members, our agenda for our meeting on tonight. Are there any questions on the agenda that has been put forth? If there are no questions, we ask for a roll call vote from Ms. Chapman for the adoption of our agenda for our meeting on tonight.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Ms. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Don't believe Mr. Holmes is present.
No, he would not be with us tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. The agenda has been adopted. The first item on our agenda tonight is our consent items, which consist of the draft minutes from September the 3rd, 2020, and a special call meeting on September the 24th, 2020. And we also have the approval of payables for October 2020 in the amount of $869,560.78. Could we get a, uh... Are there any questions on the consent items? If no questions or discussion on the consent items, could we get a motion to, uh, receive and approve the consent items for our agenda on tonight?
Show move.
We do have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second to accept the, uh, consent items?
Second. Judy.
It has been properly moved, probably moved a second by, uh, Mrs. Little. It's been, the motion was made by Mr. Calhoun. Could we get a roll call vote from, uh, Ms. Chapman on the consent items?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion has been carried. The consent items have been approved. At this time, we go into the new business of our meeting on tonight, and we're going to ask our administrator, Ms. Rollins, if she would come in and lead us in the discussion and, uh, items that draw our attention now with new business.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Drury, members of the board, and all who are still on our virtual meeting this afternoon. The first item on your agenda is budget adjustments. Ms. Carol Sundell will not be on the call this evening, so I'll be going over this item. There are two budget amendments for your consideration this evening, and that, uh, budget amendment is to request additional revenue and expenditures that are associated with the Children's Services Act and the utility funds for fiscal year 1920 in order to cover unbudgeted costs. Um, the Children's Services Act, um, each year, the county does a estimated budget of the costs that's associated with the Children's Services Act Fund. At, uh, prior to the end of the year, there's a typical, a, a requirement, uh, that we may have to have additional funds to cover the participants or the children who are part of that program. So this particular year, we had to request a supplement. The additional state revenue is $166,302. So we need to appropriate that additional state revenue in order to cover the costs that's associated with the Children's Services Act, and that is the Comprehensive Services Act Fund. In addition, there's a local match requirement that's associated with that, and that amount is $156,967. And again, this is for the children, uh, that is mandated that Surrey County serves underneath this program. So we're asking this evening for a budget amendment to cover that. The next item is for a utilities fund revenue and expenditure adjustment. We're asking that the, uh, transfer from, of $22,680 be transferred from the County General Fund to the Utilities Fund to cover an unanticipated cost that's associated with that fund. So the required action on this evening, Mr. Chairman, is to appropriate the revenue and related expenditures within the CSA and utilities funds as outlined. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for giving us the information on the request for the budget adjustment. Are there any questions or discussions from, uh, board members on, uh, this item? Ms. Rollins, I'd just like to ask one question. The first, uh, that you were talking about the Children's Services Act. What is the total, uh, that, uh, we need to make the amendment for? You gave me two figures. Is it, is it, uh... Both of those combined, or is just one of those numbers? Was it the 166,302 or 156,967? What was the total in that area?
Yes, it is the combined, it's the combined amount, sir. It's just that one amount is the amount that we're getting from the state, and the other amount is the required local match. So we're asking for the appropriation of the total amount.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions from board members?
Melissa, Ms. Rollins?
Yes.
The Utilities Fund. We're going to transfer $22,680, and we only, at this time, is going to expend $13,000. Is that what that is?
No. Uh, I need to explain that further. No, so each year, we also budget an amount for the Utilities Fund, and that, the majority of that cost is associated with our, for an example, our, uh, uh, treatment costs uh, for slush removal and things of that nature. Um, so this year, uh, we were, uh, under budget by that amount. Typically, that money, that fund is funded by a transfer from the General Fund to cover those costs. So we just need a little bit more money than what was initially appropriated. So we're asking for an additional $22,000 plus to cover those costs for the fiscal year.
Okay, so the total for the whole fund would be $22,680 plus the 13.
Um, Mrs. Little, I'm going back to that agenda note, um, real quick. Just give me one second. That's okay. I moved ahead. Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. That, that is, I see that, no, that is just an, uh, just an error. That was, uh, just a mis, a mistype. It should be $22,680. A very good catch, Little. That was just a typo on her part, so it should be $22,680.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any, any more questions or discussions from, uh, fellow board members? If there be none, uh, the chairman entertained a motion on, uh, the budget adjustments for year 2019, 20.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would appropriate the revenue and related expenditures within the fiscal year 2019-20 CSA and utility spots.
Have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
Second from Tim Calhoun.
It has been properly moved a second. Can we get a roll call vote on the budget adjustment from Ms. Chapman?
Yes. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. Next item in new business, it is a update on the grocery store project in, uh, the county.
Okay, Mr. Elliott, I am going to ask Mr. David Harrison, Income Planning, Community Development and Economic Development Director, to come forth and present this item to, um, the board tonight. Um, the agenda note is actually a food access COVID-19 relief grant, and we're asking the board to consider on this evening. Mr. Harrison?
Good evening, Chairman Elliott. Board members assembled virtually, and everyone else assembled. Ms. Rollins? Um, I am to present, as, uh, Ms. Rollins just stated, the agenda note regarding the Grocery COVID-19 Relief Grant. State is respectfully, uh, requesting authorization to allocate $300,000 of the county's coronavirus relief funds under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act for a grant program to assist Surrey County Marketplace with the establishment of a local market and grocery delivery service to benefit citizens of Surrey County, Virginia, who have been adversely affected by the lack of grocery in the Surrey County community during the COVID-19 pandemic. The application invoices, receipts, and records associated with purchases for the local market and delivery service will be maintained by Mrs. Linda Goldson, who is our Workforce Development Coordinator, and will be given to the appropriate Economic Development Authority member for payment and reimbursement. And all grant funds will be distributed by the Surrey County Economic Development Authority in accordance with the grant guidelines and memorandum of the understanding that has been included, uh, for your review and, and consideration in your board packages. So again, we are requesting, um, $300,000 for the COVID-19, uh, from CARES to go to the, uh, Grocery COVID-19 Relief in the form of a relief grant. Um, are there any questions for me at this time?
Are there any questions, board members?
Mr. Elliott, is this a, is this a voting-ish, uh, voting? Are we going to vote?
Yes, it will be, sir. It will be. Uh, this is an opportunity to ask questions if you have any.
This is Tim Calhoun. I just have some concerns. You know, we asked for some financial information in a prior meeting and some, um, kind of a schedule of what he's, uh, what the source is planning on doing. And to my knowledge, sir, we have not received that yet for the board review.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Are there any other concerns, uh, fellow board members?
Well, Mr. Elliott, I guess I made that statement, and maybe I should ask the question.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I'm not prepared to vote on this without seeing some financial statements, as he promised to give us six months ago or so.
Okay. Um, Mr. Harrison, you want, I can, I'll get on, and then Mr. Harrison, um, can, I can also respond. Um, so, uh, the, the answer to that question in terms of this, uh, being a grant to the, uh, the applicant, this is a little different in terms of the initial, uh, conversation in terms of what we handled earlier when the board had made a decision to, um, grant the money from, um, the county's, uh, General Fund. So this is a grant similar to the grants that we are providing to the businesses, um, for the other COVID relief, uh, grants. And, uh, that is, uh, something that we still can discuss at another time, Mr. Calhoun, but that is the, uh, the, the difference between, um, the initial, um, decision that the board was contemplating in terms of that particular, uh, contribution for the grocery store. And I will also let Mr. Harrison to provide any additional comments.
Yes, uh, Mr. Calhoun, a- as Ms. Rollins stated, uh, that was a previous request, uh, from Mr. White from the county directly to incentivize the project, uh, but this is a, a completely different, a horse of a different color. This is, uh, COVID grant, uh, funds that have been given through the federal government, through the state, to us for grocery relief, and we are, uh, labeled as a food desert. So this is not so much as so benefit to the applicant, but benefit to the citizens who have been without grocery, grocery access uh, in the middle of the pan, in the midst of a pandemic. So these funds are aligned with the crisis that we're in, not so much as the, the funding requested from the county, and they're not coming from county funds. It's coming from COVID relief funds. Um, Mr. Mr. White, I can attest, is, is in good standing, and he has gone through a town process. I can provide you with all that documentation. He does have his, uh, business license from the Town of Surrey, and his business for a local market has been approved. And we have also, um, just applied for a grant with the, uh, OBC Foundation on the 25th, which is this past Friday, in the amount of $300,000 as well, um, for this application, which they have instructed us to apply for. So, um, I am urging, uh, the board to consider approving this, uh, because it can be of great benefit to the community and citizens of Surrey County.
Mr. Harrison? Go ahead. Mr. Drew, you, you have the floor.
Um, what? Again, I, and I understand, does this have to be also approved? Is he going through the EDA, Mr. Harrison? And does it have to be approved by the EDA?
Yes, sir. Same process. So first, we have to come to you as the board. We don't have anything to carry to the EDA unless the board deems it to be a project and approves the transfer. So the process is for us to come, present it to you all. Uh, you all approve the, the funds to be transferred to the EDA, and then the EDA will, um, uh, incentivize the project with the funds transferred to them from the, from the Coronavirus Relief Fund, uh, with the stipulated MOU that's been included in your package, as well as the application process. So, uh, the Marketplace LLC will not be able to just frivolously spend the funding. They have to make an application for each transaction, and it goes through the same process that we're carrying for each COVID relief grant that we've already, um, instituted to, to citizens and businesses. So it's just not free rein. It's, it's, it's tight, and, and OBC had to actually approve, not OBC, yeah, they actually had to approve this as well, because we sent them the same MOU and application. So they had to approve this as well, and they did. And then we, we were able to apply for that grant as well.
Mr. Harrison, is this, but is this coming through the CARES Act or then OBC?
This is CARES. Yes, sir. So CARES does, uh, designate, uh, allow localities to give funding towards grocery relief or grocery delivery services, uh, for citizens, especially, uh, communities that are located in food deserts. So CARES does allow us to use this funding for grocery. Yes, sir.
And so this will be reimbursement of expenses?
No, this will not be a reimbursement grant. This is not reimbursement. This is for, so CARES will not allow us to reimburse. This is for the cost of... This is for, so CARES will not allow us to reimburse. This is for the cost of the startup of the local market. So, um, stocking and purchase of the food, and then the delivery services, which will benefit our elderly residents and citizens of the community, who will be able to order, uh, food and have it delivered instead of going out and risking themselves in this pandemic and in this crisis and risking their health. They will be able to have, uh, food delivered to them. Uh, one of my claims has been to both the OVC Foundation and, um, that I'm, and I write up, uh, and justifying the use of CARES relief funds, has been that we are a small rural community, and our COVID numbers, uh, started off kind of small, and then, of course, we don't have grocery or direct access to grocery. Our citizens have been traveling to other communities and exposing themselves, uh, to, to larger, higher risk, or larger numbers of COVID. And so that, that's kind of how we've gotten to this point, to where we can go ahead and use COVID relief funds, uh, for grocery, and, and the OVC Foundation has approved us to make application for COVID relief funds for grocery as well. And the amount from OVC, the requested amount from the county's COVID relief is three hundred, and the requested amount from the OVC Foundation is three hundred thousand as well, sir.
And, and I'm in support of it. I'm in support of doing this. I just, kind of leading on what Mr. Calhoun was saying, what assurances do we have? No, what is in place that if we give this LLC three hundred thousand dollars, that they're gonna do anything with it?
Uh, we have, we have, we'll have an agreement in place. I mean, the, the funding will have to be used. Again, it's federal funding passed down, so we have to account for the funding. So it's not like you, we are requesting you all to just willingly give fundings over. No, we have a strict process that we have to follow, and I have to account for all the fundings. Ms. Goldson, just, there's all the other relief grants will be taking a record of each application coming in, each expense, and we have to report that back. So it's not like we're just giving funds and there's no measures in place. There's measures beyond accounting, uh, and accounting for the funds, sir.
I, I, I'm just a little confused. Reason I said, but it'd be reimbursement, it said in here eligibility for a grant must present all invoices, receipts and documentation associated with purchasing. What, what does that mean?
So, uh, so before he can purchase, uh, or the LLC can purchase for any expenses related to grocery, he has to provide us with an invoice of what the, of what the, um, purchase on, or what the product would be, or whatever it is, whether it's stocking or anything related to delivery services. After he provides us with the invoice, um, the, the EDA would approve the transaction, and then after that, he has to provide us with a receipt, because we're accountable for all sp- funds spent. So that's the process. First, an invoice, and we would have to approve the expense to be paid, uh, for grocery relief. And then after the invoice would follow the receipt. After he purchased it, he has to provide us with the receipt of purchase, and he has to justify the use when he submits the invoice.
Yeah, that's what I meant by reimbursement type program. So, so it's, it's, you have to verify it before you.
Yeah, yeah, he does not have, yeah, we have to, EDA would have to approve any, any, um, transaction made before. He, he can't just spend the money. No, sir, yeah.
Okay. Uh, with, with that said, that, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you, and I'm okay with it now.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, one up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Uh, it, it seems that, uh, safeguards and everything have been, been put in place. Uh, do we have any, uh, words from Mr. White, uh, on the status of when the county may actually receive services from, from this project?
Mr. White, and I, I do understand his position. He's made a sizable investment in the community, and, and he was just looking for some, some, some assurance that we're gonna meet him halfway. Of course, we know he's taking the risk business-wise, investing in a rural community in grocery. So he is, as soon as he, uh, receives funds, he's, he's actually already started with exterior. He's already purchased the refrigeration associated and everything needed to kind of house the, uh, food and everything in, in the store and for delivery services. So as soon as he gets funding, he's ready to move forward with the establishment of grocery store itself. Opening the store, the town has permitted him to open, um, and so he, he's good to go as soon as he receives funds. And again, a request has been made to the county from coronavirus relief, and a request has been made this past Friday to the OVC Foundation, and, and both in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, sir. So as soon as he gets funding, he's ready to begin.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions from board members? If there be no other questions, uh, the chair is ready to entertain a motion on the, uh, COVID-nineteen CARES Act Fund Relief for the Grocery Store in Surrey County. Do we have a motion to come forward at this time?
Mr. Chairman, um, looking at the required action statement, and it is, it says decide whether to allocate three hundred thousand dollars from the CARES Act. Um, do we have to accept those funds first, or we can, we have them and we just have to allocate them?
Yes, I believe we have them. We need to allocate them.
Okay. All right, well, I move that we would, um, allocate three hundred thousand dollars from the CARES Act funding to the Economic Development Authority for a food access slash grocery COVID-nineteen relief grant to Surrey Marketplace LLC.
Thank you, Ms. Little. We have a motion on the floor. That was a whole lot. Thank you so much for, for placing it correctly. Could we get a second on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mike, jury, I'll second it.
It has been properly moved a second. Could we get a roll call vote from Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is, uh, motion is carried. The next item on, on the business is a request for public hearing for the Sem- Central Absentee Precinct cap. We, uh, had a discussion on it previously in our previous meeting. On a temporary basis now, we're coming back, uh, to establish this as a, as a permanent, uh, central absentee precinct. So we ask now that Ms. Rollins or her designated will come forth with information on this.
Okay, um, you, you stated that, Mr. Elliott, in terms of what happened at our earlier meeting, uh, that was an emergency resolution that we had to do pursuant to the applicable Virginia Code section, may need the Surrey County Voter Register's Office as a central absentee precinct. Uh, and because early voting began eighteen of September, there was insufficient time to advertise for the ordinance. So the registrar brought forth a request to have that done on an emergency basis. But at this time, we're required to actually do the official ordinance. So we're asking for a public hearing, uh, the fifth of November to ratify the emergency ordinance that we did adopt. And of course, this must occur, um, according to legal counsel, it is sixty days of the adoption of the emergency ordinance. In this case, it would be by November the twenty-fourth. So the required action this evening, again, is authorize the public hearing on the fifth to ratify the emergency ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions, board members? If not, uh, we will entertain a motion now to, for a public hearing, uh, for the Central Absentee Precinct to ratify our emergency order. Could we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. This is Judy.
Thank you, Ms. Little. We have a motion on the floor for Ms. Little. Could we have a second?
Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun, second.
This has been properly moved a second. Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call vote, please, on the Central Absentee Precinct?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. The next, uh, item of new business is easement county property, uh, to Dominion Energy for our rural broadband project. Mrs. Rollins?
Yes, um, Mr. Elliott, I'm going to ask Ms. Powell if she can present this item, um, to the board.
Okay.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, to further the rural broadband initiative, the purpose of the easement before you is to allow Dominion to install fiber optic lines to attach to their currently existing poles, as well as to allow third-party internet service providers like PGEC to use those fiber optic lines and poles to hook up internet service for businesses and residences that may want it. Dominion may also repair or replace poles, but it is my understanding that they do not intend to construct new poles, just the fiber optic lines. And so in order for this to occur, um, Dominion will need an easement, and so the ask is for the board to approve this easement to Dominion to allow them to install fiber optic lines, which will in turn allow internet providers like Prince George Electric to be able to hook up businesses and residences for internet. Happy answering any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from board members from Ms. Powell on, uh, this item of new business? If there be none, could we get a motion for, uh, acceptance of the easement request from Dominion Power, uh, in this matter for our rural broadband project?
Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun, so moved.
Have a motion on the floor for Mr. Calhoun. Ms. Ms. Little?
Second.
Ms. Little has second. Has second motion. Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. We now move to our public hearing. We have two items on our public hearing tonight. First is the CARES Act funding, round two of our CARES Acts funding. Uh, so we give way now to, uh, proper personnel to introduce this for our public hearing.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Elliott, and just before I, uh, start the conversation on this item, I want to go back to the previous item just to add this comment for the board and for the public's, uh, information. I just wanted to let you all know that I talked with the representative, um, who, the company is Doyle, um, who's actually asking for the easements, not just from the county, um, but also from residents. I know that residents in the community have received those notifications. In talking with the representative from Doyle, he wanted me to share this information with you, to the public. He has received overwhelming positive response from the residents in terms of granting the easements that they need, uh, excuse me, that they need in order to complete the, uh, the poll work for, uh, the, uh, rural broadband project. He said that the citizens have been courteous, they have been nice, they have been opening their doors from a social distance standpoint, so he just wanted to say that he is appreciated and has enjoyed working in Surrey County. I just wanted to share that information. Okay.
You always get to hear good news.
Yes, sir, thank you.
It's good to hear, because if, if they, if Dominion experiences, of course, a delay in terms of getting the new easements, then of course, that impacts a delay in the project itself. So it sounds like they're, they're moving forward. Okay. All right, so, uh, the next item that you mentioned, Mr. Elliott, is a public hearing on the round two of the CARES Act funding. Um, as you all are aware, the, uh, the county has received the second round in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars in Corona's aid relief and economic security, uh, the CARES Act funding for twenty twenty. Um, the public hearing is required because the amount of the funding exceeds the one percent threshold that we need to do to have budget, to have amendments to our, um, budget. So tonight, we're asking for the public hearing to amend the budget in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars to reflect the federal revenues, uh, that we will, that we have already received, uh, from the CARES Act, and to appropriate those funds for expenditures. The information that is before you, um, in terms of a, a breakdown of the various categories that we had indicated, um, at that time, that we would use to support, um, various activities, programs, uh, equipment in the county as relates to economic development, wealth and welfare and public safety, food distribution, as we just discussed, information technology, public information, county response. And again, um, there's always the need to have a little bit of money set aside in terms of some things that may come up prior to the expenditure, which must take place by December twenty twenty. Um, I did provide, um, to you, um, earlier, a detailed list of the COVID, uh, related CARES expenditures that we have already, um, have made since, it's, I want to say September, probably around the fifteenth. Um, in addition to some additional requests that we have received from the various departments, um, in the various categories that I mentioned. And, um, if you want me to go over that information in detail this afternoon, I will do that. Um, but if you do look at it, you can see that we are making a impact in terms of providing the, uh, community impactful things to our citizens. Um, so again, we're asking for just the amendment, uh, for that particular funding this evening. And I'd be more than happy to go through the details as to how we using the CARES Act at your discretion.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rollins. I, I think we are good with, uh, what you presented thus far. Uh, board members, do you need any further explanation? Any board members? If not, we open up the public hearing now in regards to the CARES Act funding round two. Are there any, uh, ones from the public that would like to speak to the board now on this matter? If you be, be so, please state your name, your district that you represent, and we will take you one at a time.
Yes, sir. Reverend Elliott, this is Diane Chief, Surrey District. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Chief. Yes, I can.
Thank you, um, for the information. Unfortunately, I didn't realize that we were actually holding the public, uh, meeting tonight on this, and I hadn't had a chance to review it. So, um, not that I disagree about being able to use funds appropriately. Uh, I just didn't realize that this actually was gonna be the public hearing. Usually, you know, you give us a little notice on that. Maybe I missed it. Thank you.
Ms. Chief, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mike Eggleston. I have a problem with. I have a problem with board members being asked to vote on something that they didn't receive proper documentation prior to the meeting on. Yeah, we bring up things in a meeting that board members haven't received the documentation on, and then we vote on it? Is that a way to make a good informed decision?
Mr. Eggleston, what, can you give me a reference on what you're referring to, sir?
The thing that you voted on earlier about the funds, the three hundred thousand dollars.
That has something to do with this.
So that we, we are discussing CARES Act funding round two. This is a public hearing for that.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, I listen to all you.
This is, this, Mr. Eggleston, this is.
Do the same thing every time. You ask them to vote with their documentation.
Mr. Eggleston, this is not, this is not citizens' comments at this time. We are holding a public hearing on the CARES Act funding round two. Do you have any comments on that, sir?
No.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments on CARES Act funding round two? Please state your name and your district, please. If there be no other comments, we close the public hearing at this time. Board members, it has been presented to us, uh, to receive the second, uh, uh, round of funding, uh, five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, to amend our budget, uh, to appropriate it for expenditures for COVID relief. What is your pleasure on this at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would, um, appropriate, if that's what we're doing, appropriate the CARES Act funding in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. And, um, that's my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Little. We have a motion on the floor. Could we get a second on the motion? That we would indeed receive these monies for CARES Act to be used in Surrey County. Could we get a second on the motion?
Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun. Go ahead, Mr. Drew.
Yes, Ms. Calhoun. Ms. Calhoun, you've been recognized. It has been properly moved and seconded that we would receive the CARES Act funding, the round two of CARES Act funding for COVID relief in Surrey County. Could we get a roll call vote from Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. The next item on public hearing is lease of property, a request from Prince George Electric Co-op.
Yeah. Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. And I'm going to ask for permission, if I may, to back up about five minutes. The reason being, in terms of the CARES Act funding that we just approved to amend to the budget, if you won't mind me taking about one minute just to highlight a summary of the expenditures by category, and I think that may be beneficial for the public to hear. May I do that, sir?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you so very much. I do not want to interrupt the public hearing, but I appreciate you allowing me to do that. Summary of the uses by category, economic development, business assistance, $120,000 will assist our businesses. Information technology as it pertains to virtual environment, security, teleworking needs, things of this, of that nature, $132,000 roughly. Public safety, cleaning, personal protective equipment protections. There will be equipment that we anticipate getting for our Surrey Volunteer Rescue Squad, like, for example, respirators and some other equipment needs. That total $142,000. Access to marketing signage as relates to advertising for community in terms of campaigns, $13,602. Also signage that we intend to purchase. For an example, at the government center, we hope to have additional sign that's going to be located near the roadway where we can notify citizens of various things that need to happen as relates to COVID-19 and other important messages. Rental assistance and food delivery, health and human service, social services, $23,500. Food access to citizens, as just approved, it was $300,000 in addition to additional amounts, and that total amount of food access to citizens during the pandemic, $323,000 roughly. Agency contributions to the library, to the Riverside Regional Jail, request for specialized cleaning, $9,200. Evidence pay that was already approved by the board supervisors in terms of medication and response, and also the monitoring that we are doing at our front entrances, a total of $115,000. So roughly, that is $914,000 of the total $1.12 million that the county has received for CARES. As mentioned, there is funding that has been allocated to the towns if they do need it. We have received some inquiries from one of our towns in terms of some expenditures they would like to make. I have had conversations with all the three towns. They know that money is available. They have been made aware of the stipulations that's associated with expending this money and that the county is accountable for it. The money does not have to go to the towns. It is available to them if they can prove a need for the funds based on a reimbursement basis. So again, thank you, sir, for allowing me to present that information.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for giving us the information on how these funds have been appropriated and how they will be used and have been used. We thank you for doing a job well done on the distribution of the COVID funds. At this time, we will have, go now to our second item in our public hearing, which is lease of property, Prince George Electric Co-op.
Okay, Ms. Powell, I'm going to ask you to present that item. Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. County staff is asking that the board approve a lease agreement with Prince George Electric, where the county will lease a portion of the property located at 205 Enos Farm Drive as a part of the Digital Broadband Education Center. Prince George will be a staff from Prince George in that building, and they will be available to provide information to individuals that are desiring or willing to learn the fundamentals of using the broadband technology that will be available in the county soon, or those that already have access to the internet. The office space, like I said, will be operated by Prince George, and it will be a community outreach program, offering free education and on digital technology.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. The location of this, is this at the Rex Center? Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, that is correct, sir. It is at the Recreation Center. Initially, it was set up at a office space that's near the rear entrance of the facility whereby citizens and patrons who needed to enter the facility to receive those services would come to the Obviously, we're still in a COVID situation. However, I do want to share that at some point, once Prince George Electric finished the facility, there will be some public announcement in terms of when that is going to be open. Obviously, we anticipate and hopefully that we do have our citizens, especially during this environment, will come and take part in learning about the services that are available and all about the broadband technology because it has many uses that we do feel that a lot of citizens may not necessarily be aware that they can take part in. So we're looking forward to this huge initiative. Obviously, we do want traction. We do want citizens to participate, and it's going to be a combined effort of the county and Prince George Electric Co-op to get the communication out that this facility is open and all the precautions and things that we need to put in place as it pertains to dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and still having the services available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell and Ms. Rollins. Board members, are there any questions on the lease? Oh, this is a public hearing. So we do open it up at this time for public comments on the lease of the property for Prince George County Electric Co-op. Are there any comments from our citizens at this time? If there be no comments from our citizens, board members, what would be your pleasure on the lease of the property? We do close the public hearing on this at this time. What is your prerogative or your pleasure, excuse me, on the lease of the property, Prince George County Electric Co-op at Rex Center?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would approve the lease agreement between the County of Surrey and Prince George Electric Cooperative Enterprises LLC for leased property located at 205 Enos Farm Drive for Rural Band Education Center. And I am so very happy about that because I'm sure I will need to be trained.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Could we get a second on the motion? Motion is on the floor.
Second, Mike Curry.
It has been properly moved and second. Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our next order of business, which is presentations and staff reports. First item is update on our mobile hotspots coming from Mr. Delon Brown, our IT Director. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Chairman and board members. I just want to provide a quick update to where we are with our connectivity initiative here in the county. Working alongside staff and the crew with Prince George Electric Co-op as well as with an independent contractor that I work with prior. We're working now to have the first leg of our hotspots implemented around October the 15th. We're looking at areas of the government center near the pavilion, near the pavilion area, and the other initial pilot will be at the rear of the emergency services on Colson, the new center that's located right up Colonial Trail West. The idea for this is to provide the resources for, we seem to have a lot of coverage that is designated for our K-12 environment, but then there seems to be a little bit of a gap for maybe those who are at higher ed, at higher ed space and those who maybe have some, you know, other job training that may need to happen and some, whatever the criteria, you know, that's set. So the idea is to have a space where that group of constituents in the community can go and have reliable service as a pilot to kind of, you know, see our traction and kind of see the use case of it and kind of see, you know, hopefully with the results of it that we can, one day, potentially at some point, implement some type of interconnectivity setup here within the county that, you know, while we have a lot of people who like to walk around near the county government center and other spaces that we can just have a hotspot that's, some people really like to have it on their phones for Pandora and things like that as they're walking. So maybe not only a, an initiative for the necessity of broadband while we're waiting our completion of our broadband project, but to also provide it as a resource, a recreation resource, as well to definitely, you know, serve the citizens of the county with more than just, you know, the regular services that are slated for our children. So as Dr. Sims alluded, alluded to on the previous call, you know, there are certain filters that are designated for the K-12 environment. And so I think, you know, in order to alleviate any type of usage that, you know, we could, you know, shorten up their usage to a degree and not overuse the kijits, which, you know, no one in the community is really able to use. But the students, but we'll provide another resource that, you know, we can have for the parent that's maybe waiting for the student. So, or something like that. So that's where we are with it. Like I said, the first phase will be, we're hoping to have it implemented around the 15th of October. Definitely, I will try to communicate maps and a coverage map presentation over to the board. And when we make the announcement, we want to make sure that when we make the announcement, we have all our I's dotted and our T's crossed for this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. That's great news for the citizens of Surrey. So we thank you for the update on the mobile hotspots that will be coming forth in the county. Thank you, sir. Our next presentation will be COVID-19 updates coming to us from Mr. Ray Phelps, Emergency Service Director, Mr. Phelps.
Good evening, Chairman and the board, board members and Ms. Rollins. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Great, great. What I want to talk to you about COVID, currently Surrey County is at 119 positive cases in Surrey County with four deaths. We're still continuing to increase our numbers, not quite at the rate that we were last month. Things have slowed down a little bit, but the Crater Health District has moved back into the moderate rate of spread. So is the Hampton Roads region. So the rate of spread has increased in the, in the two regions that we closely affiliate with. So I want people to keep that in mind, to do their due diligence, wear a mask, create social distancing and things along those lines. The Halloween, the Halloween season is quickly approaching, and this year may look a little bit different than in years past. Everyone can protect themselves from COVID-19 by avoiding people who live outside of their household. There's certain ways, there's different ways that you can do this. But if you, if you do participate in any Halloween-type events, we're asking that you continue to wear a mask, make sure that you keep your six-foot, social distancing, wash your hands frequently, and use hand sanitizer. We're asking also that people who are at higher risk of illness should avoid all participation in any Halloween-type festivities this year. To stay healthy and safe during Halloween, consider activities such as decorating your living space, carving pumpkins with the people you live with in your, in your household, having virtual Halloween costume contests and different things along those lines, be a little creative. This upcoming Saturday, October 3rd, we will be hosting a COVID-19 testing, free testing. It'll be at the Denderin Community Center from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. We're asking that people pre-register. The public can get more information off of the website or the Facebook page, the number to pre-register is on there. Well, tomorrow, what we're going to do is we're going to send out an Everbridge alert to the entire county and open this testing up to everybody in Surrey County. So that'll be October 3rd, this Saturday. Now, we do have two more test dates, which we will have to put out the locations and the, and the exact times and dates for October. And they are the mobile, the rapid mobile testing that the Crater Health District has started. So starting, supposed to be starting this month, we'll have at least two more test dates, and then every month after, every other week, we should have test dates through, through the end of the year and into the beginning of next year. One of the things we discussed today in our Crater Health District meeting is that we need to start preparing ourselves for longevity of this. They're, they're, from the Health Department level now, they're talking until the end of 2021 that we're going to be dealing with altered way of life and, and you know, types of precautions that we take. So, you know, we, we need to do what we can to try and prevent prolonging that as, as, as much as possible. So that is all I have at this time, and I wish everybody well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Phelps, for the update on the COVID-19, and thank you for all the work that you do to try to keep the citizens of Surrey County safe. Thank you for reminding us of our safety precautions that we have and what we have at our disposal to kind of stymie the spread of this dreaded disease here in Surrey County. And we look forward to the upcoming dates of testing that we can make sure that our citizens get to know. Thank you so much for all you do, Mr. Phelps. Thank you, sir. We will now have our registrar's update, a verbal report from our own registrar, Ms. Shawnee White.
Good evening, Chair and board members and citizens that have assembled here on our virtual call. I just wanted to give an update a little bit that we had our cap opening. And so on that Friday after the meeting, we did have the machines and everything in place to do in person on the machine. At the date, we have 308 in-person early voting since 9:18. We've had 218 individuals return their vote by mail application, I mean ballots. And then we've had 405 that have been issued out that we're awaiting return for the, for the ballots. Notes to the citizens, the Bacon's Castle, Mount Nebo Baptist Church polling place has been temporarily relocated to the Bacon's Castle Baptist Church at 86 Bacon's Castle Trail in Surrey, Virginia for this election. The notices that have been mailed to affected voters, it's a little over 1,000 voters that have been affected by this temporary change, and we have mailed notices to each and every one of those individuals. I wanted the citizens to know that the Surrey County Registrar Office is now open to the public from Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30 to conduct all business related to elections. We ask that you continue to wear your face covering upon entering the government center. We will have in-person Saturday early voting on October the 24th and October the 31st from 8:30 to 4:30. The last day to register to vote for this election is October the 13th. The last day to apply for vote by mail is October the 24th, and the last day to vote in person is October the 31st. As always, the precinct will be open on Election Day of November the 3rd from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. What we've done in response to COVID to keep everyone safe upon entering the building, again, we require face coverings. We have sanitizing of each booth after each voter. We only allow two voters in the office at a time. We maintain social distancing in the lines, which have been very short. We have hand sanitizer at each, at each booth. And the writing utensils that are used are one-use only. They are allowed to take the pen with them or they can discard it. And so those are some of the measures that we And so those are some of the measures that we've been taking in the office in response to the COVID-19. Everything has been going well thus far. We've had positive response from the citizens, um, in social media and in person about how well we're doing with maintaining the COVID response and as well as, um, the voting. So we're excited about our new cap and we're excited about the new changes that are coming in place and we're ready. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. White, for our report and, and, uh, doing your due diligence to keep our citizens safe a- as we, uh, all take on our responsibility with our civic duties of voting. Thank you, uh, for job well done. Uh, next item, uh, for presentation is Hampton Roads Planning District Commission COVID Regional Campaign. There is a slide, a video. Uh, Ms., Ms. Rollins, how are we going to go about handling this, uh, virtually? Can we get some instructions, please?
Yes, you can. I am going to ask, um, Mr. Brown, um, to show that. But, um, if we can just hold off and show that during the county administration's report, then it may flow just a little bit better. Um, and while we, um, I'm asking that question, I'm going to ask Ms. LaSonia White if she's on the call. Ms. White? Okay. I wasn't sure whether or not Ms. LaSonia White was on the call, but I wanted to share that she was instrumental in working with the, uh, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, um, on this initiative. Um, it is a regional campaign, and I'm going to tell you that the cost for this was $41 of your CARES Act money. So that's how much it is. But we can show that, um, during the county administrator's report, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Uh, and so at this time, we will close our presentations and staff report, and we do move to our county administrator's report. So we turn it over now solely to our county administrator, Ms. Rollins.
Okay. Well, good evening again, sir, and thank you all so much for, um, the meeting on this evening. Um, just a short report for you on tonight. Um, I think I mentioned earlier on our previous meeting that, um, this year has been a year in which we have been undoubtedly faced with, um, a lot of challenges, uh, even outside the pandemic. Um, but I'm always pleased to say that all the time there seems to be a silver lining, um, in all the challenges that we do face as a county and as a community. Uh, we had on the 17th of September, a transformer blew, uh, at the government center and we lost power. Um, and of, of all the days, uh, that you do not want to lose power, it would be the days in which you have your first day of official in-person voting. Um, so Ms. White and her team was still there, and I just wanted to say that our team worked and they stepped up to the plate and they was able to provide temporary services, uh, electric, electrical wise to the registrar's office so that she can continue her service to the public to make sure that our citizens were able to come in to do the early voting on the day that we actually lost power because a transformer blew. Uh, so Dominion just cut us off and, and, and stepped up to the plate. So, uh, we just want to recognize them and thank them and also thank Ms. White for her comments in terms of the support they gave her that particular day for, um, getting her, um, back up and running, or she never lost, uh, service. So we do appreciate that. Um, also, I wanted to share that, uh, the next slide shows that, and you all should be able to see my screen for those who are on, um, the video call. But the next item I wanted to share is that, uh, during last week, um, I had the opportunity, um, and over the weekend to attend the virtual, uh, ICMA conference. And, um, it gave county administrators and other, uh, leaders an opportunity, um, to get together in a virtual platform. And as you can imagine during this time, a lot of the conversations, a lot of the sessions, a lot of the discussions, uh, were pertaining to the pandemic and leading through the pandemic. I just wanted to share with the board just two, um, things that I did participate in because I think that these are important for our community. Uh, one of the sessions I participated in was called Think Big, the importance of visionary leadership. And it, it gave us the opportunity to say that it is so important, especially in the 21st century, that we do, uh, come up with those creative techniques to lead, lead in a very aspirational way within our organization. And that the visionary leadership that we have to do, um, in the midst of pandemic or outside of pandemics is very critical to the long-term success of any municipality. And the takeaways from this is thinking big for everyone. So thinking big requires a community effort. Um, no matter where you are, thinking big is possible. It gave us a chance to share amongst each other that taking advantage of opportunities that you have to speak to your local government professionals and what they are going through in their communities, as I had stated with you before, has been very beneficial and has helped us get through this pandemic. Reaching out to a peer once a month to, to again, uh, stay curious about how they're tackling issues, uh, it's been important. And also it is crucial to demonstrate throughout the organization and to you as our elected officials, why investing in bold ideas are very important, um, in leading in the 21st century. Um, so I just wanted to share that, um, that conference was, um, they did an excellent job putting it together. Um, so I just wanted to say that I did, uh, attend, take the opportunity to, uh, to squeeze in some time to, uh, to attend some of those sessions during that weekend, over the weekend. Uh, the next item, uh, that I want to talk about tonight is the census update. And I do know that we had a census response committee, um, that has worked very hard over several months to make sure that all of our citizens in Sari County have been counted. Um, I do know on this past, uh, weekend, there was a closing activity, um, that was, uh, at the old hardware store. Um, currently, uh, let me see if I can expand the screen a little bit. Okay. Uh, was at the, uh, whole hardware store owner, Mr. Andy White. Um, so we had the opportunity to, uh, have a community partner, um, to have us have our closing event there. We want to thank the workforce development team, um, Ms. Golson and Ms. Gladys Fall for, uh, putting that together in addition to, uh, those citizens who have been working with the census parade. Um, if you are a citizen on this call and you can hear the sound of my voice, we certainly appreciate you, um, working with, uh, our staff members to coordinate all the census activities for the county. Um, there was about 80 participants. Um, there was also the opportunity to support local businesses. Randis Sufu was on hand to give away samples, and we also purchased, um, cupcakes from our local, um, business just for kids. Sari's response rate, from what I told, was told is 61%, 61.4% as what you see on the screen there. But compared to Virginia's response rate at this time is 71.1%. Um, if we go back and look at our 2010 census, the response rate overall ended up being about 58%. So we are doing better with the 2020 census than we did with our 2010 census. Uh, but there's still opportunity, if you know one, if you can reach one, um, of anybody who has not completed their census, it's still time to do that. Um, I want to say that October 5th, I believe, may be the closing date, um, as far as, uh, the campaign is concerned. Uh, so I just wanted to share that information with the board. Now, how do we rank amongst our peers? And, um, that's whether or not you have the competitive spirit, spirit you want to know. Out of 133 localities in the state of Virginia, right now, based on our response rate, a bit in 61.4%, we are ranked 93. Okay? We're not the best, but we're not the worst. But again, out of the 133, we are at, uh, our ranking is 93, is at 93. Okay. The next slide, uh, uh, Mr. Phelps, uh, advised the, uh, board and citizens regarding our COVID cases in Sari. I just wanted to put this graphic up to show, um, the rise in our cases in the month of September alone. Um, sometimes the visual, uh, of, of course helps, um, send the message home in terms of the numbers that we're having, um, which reminds us to mask up. We started December 1st at 75 cases. And September 30th, we are ending up with 118 cases. And that also shows our comparison against the other localities in Crater Health District. All right. So at this time, we're going to talk about the need to mask up. Um, the mask-up community campaign launches October the 5th, and at this time, I will ask Mr. Brown's assistance in getting our video going. And Mr. Brown, sir, um, I actually put a link in, am I able to click on this link and it'll start without you having to do it differently? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, now, because we have a lot of callers in, uh, they may not have been as effective, uh, reaching those, but I would just give a little bit of information about that, and we will make sure that, uh, we post that. But one of the reasons we want to go ahead and bring that to everybody's attention is because you will actually see that on TV. And all of the 15 localities that are in, that are in the Hampton Roads, uh, Planning District Commission area participated in this campaign call, uh, is up to us, Mask Up Virginia. Um, so we are looking forward to seeing that, um, Sari County's, uh, editorial as a part of the video series was the National Night Out Event. So for each of the jurisdictions, they picked a, uh, community event that is prominent in each community, and it kind of reminded us as to what those events once were, when you didn't have anybody wearing masks or anything like that, and sort of kind of recognized as going forward, when we do, uh, um, dealing with the pandemic, that is important for us to, uh, stop the spread and to mask up. So, um, you all will see Sari County on the news at some point, um, during that campaign. So thank you again, uh, Mr. Brown for sharing that. Uh, the next, uh, slide is just, uh, we always take the time to, again, to recognize, um, our, uh, our staff and the great job that they are doing. Uh, Ms. White, just mentioning her report, um, of the responses that she has received from the citizens she shared with me. Um, one of the responses that she got, and I just wanted to share this, one citizen stated, "Super easy to vote early in Sari. They are very organized." They, uh, let me start over. "They are very organized and super COVID-conscious. I'm extremely impressed with our registrar's office and the young lady at the front desk deserves an A+. She was courteous, professional, friendly and helpful. Vote early." So again, thank you, Ms. White, for, um, your office and your team providing excellent service to the citizens of Sari County. And often we do get, um, comments whereby we, uh, like to share with the, with the board and with the public. Um, it is good to receive these comments. In the midst, we do know that sometimes you do not always receive positive comments, but it's great to be able to receive these and to share these with the board and the community. Another office I want to recognize today, uh, is the Planning and Community Development Office, uh, Ms. Frances Bailey. I was speaking with her, uh, just a couple of days ago, and she told me she was a little bit, uh, nervous about the upcoming Department of Environmental Quality audit that they conducted on yesterday. And this was with the Chesapeake Bay Act Compliance Review, and this was her first time being in that position going through that audit. And I received a copy of an email that gave the staff a glowing report in their response to, um, making sure that everything was in compliance. So great job to Mrs. Frances Bailey and for the newcomer on the block, Mr. Lorenzo Turner, who was able to assist, uh, the county in getting great remarks in terms of having a successful compliance review, um, with the EQ and to Mr. Harrison for leading, um, the team effort. Just want to remind everyone that we still do have our Mocus Mobile Farmers Market. Uh, Ms. LaSonia White and her crew do an excellent job. Every Friday, last Friday, they was out there in the rain, um, even though there was a few vendors out there. I do get reports that they pretty much sell out everything they do provide. Please, uh, Sari County community, support the local farmers market. You'll be surprised, um, when you go out there and still able to partake. Obviously, we're getting close to the end of the farmers market season. I would imagine that she was going to have a, a, a fall farmers market whereby you can get a lot of the upcoming produce that you need for your holiday meals. They do an excellent job in terms of providing the social distancing. Uh, they do provide by the guidelines, um, the health department makes sure that we do do that. Um, so please support the mobile farmers market when it is available on Fridays from 3:30, excuse me, from 4 o'clock until 7 o'clock PM. And when I do say, uh, they were out there in the rain last Friday, we have a pavilion in which was covered. So we did not have that excuse not to have the market, and they certainly took advantage of that, even though the rain was, um, uh, still coming down. So we certainly do appreciate their efforts. And, um, Mr. Phelps and some others may have mentioned some dates, including Ms. White, but also I just want to bring your attention to some other important activities and meetings that are coming up. We do have a public hearing on the 26th of October. Um, Lob Lolly Solar will be having a public hearing with that planning commission. Um, there is a weapons board, um, meeting on the 19th of October as it pertains to the pipeline extension project. Um, there is a movie night at Parks and Recreation, which has been canceled, um, due to, uh, inclement weather. Uh, that has been rescheduled now for October the 10th. So I know there's something that's been shared on social media, and I do know that Social Services and Parks and Recreation are really looking forward to trying. The third time is going to be a charm, and we're going to have that event preferably on October the 10th for our citizens to enjoy, um, activity that, uh, we can safely have. Um, the Open City Healthcare Foundation grant deadline is November the 16th. The CARES Business Relief Grant Application Deadline is October the 15th. For all the Economic Development Authority members that are on the call, we certainly do appreciate you all stepping up to the plate and be able to, uh, administer these grants for, um, the county. We know that it is not easy work. Um, so we do appreciate you and thank you for all your efforts in, um, administering those grants for the community. Um, I'm not going to take away your thunder with your report, but just quickly, I, uh, at a future meeting, but I do know right now, if anyone is interested, um, I believe we have nearly 30 applications that we have received, um, for those, uh, two grants. And two, um, activities that are in the works being, um, planned are our Diabetes Walk, uh, Step Out to Add Diabetes, October the 24th, which would be underneath the pavilion. And also the sheriff is proposing to have a safe trunk or treat dry through, as Mr. Phelps, uh, stated, different than what we have been doing before. But those two events are still contingent upon plans that need to get approved by the county and make sure there are no health department requirements that I need to, um, be in place before we officially, uh, advertise and communicate, um, to the public those events. And just a couple of the things real quick. In terms of, of unemployment, I remember on a different call that it was asked about how Sari County has been faring in terms of the pandemic unemployment claims. And I want to say that, um, I received a, a report, uh, from the Virginia Gateway Region. They put this information together and shared it on our manager's call on yesterday, um, afternoon. And just to give you just a very, some numbers very briefly, uh, prior to the crisis, when the pandemic hit, they're using March the 14th in this scenario as a in this scenario as a pre-crisis claims in terms of unemployment. And at that particular time, Sari County only had one, okay? And subsequent to that week, March 28th, there were 26 claims. It increased to 79. The next week, it increased to 78. The following week, it increased to 58 the following week. So claims did go up as a result, obviously, of the pandemic. If we look at the very end of this right now, Sari County ended up with, right now, as of September the 19th, only eight unemployment claims. And altogether, 625 unemployment claims as a result of the pandemic. Just wanted to share that information for your information. And the last thing I want to mention on this evening, that Prince George Electric Co., it provided a report to the county. We will be reposting that information on our website. And again, it speaks to our rural broadband project. We are still encouraging citizens to go on to the website and sign up. The numbers are listed in their report as to the number of connections they have made. If you do know residents who have signed up for the service, you certainly will receive some good reports from them. And we, again, are still looking forward to that broadband education center. Last item on my report this evening is the reopening plan for the Sari County Government Center. We do anticipate having a plan put in place that we will allow reopening to the public on an appointment-only basis. The date for that right now is tentatively scheduled for the 15th of October. But I want everyone to be clear that when we do communicate this, it will be done by a press release, and it will be done about seven to 10 days before we actually want to do the opening. That is a tentative date, but we just want everyone to check the newspaper and also to check the website as to when we will do that. Obviously, we have been working very diligently in putting measures in place to make sure that when it happens, that you, as the public and also our employees, are still feeling safe. Obviously, we have had some traction into our facilities as pertains to the voters. Our district court are still open, and we have signs that are posted that pertain to the guidelines we want everyone to follow. Obviously, there's going to be requirement of the mask. Everyone entering will have their temperature taken. We're trying to put in some kiosks at the front of the government center, so you may be able to receive information without having to even come into an office. The treasurer's office is working to get an additional drop box in addition to the one that's already out there, so that citizens can have a better opportunity to be able to drop off their tax payments, for example. The goal is to still minimize the number of patrons that are in our facilities for the protection of yourselves and the protection of our staff. But we do recognize that often there is a need for a citizen to come into our facilities. And we're trying to handle it on a reappointment, excuse me, on an appointment-only basis. So again, we will definitely communicate that information to the citizens as to when that date will be. But right now, it's tentatively scheduled for October the 15th. We have measures in place, again, as pertains to the Plexiglas for our offices. But we still have a little bit more work to do, and that's why I stated that October 15th is a tentative date. So we appreciate so very much your patience. You all have been definitely bearing with us, and we have been bearing with each other. Our staff are, again, available by phone, by email. We have a complete listing, updated listing of all of our departments and the numbers in which they can be reached. And we will be, again, making this information available once we finalize that date. So thank you all so much for your patience and for understanding that we are all in this pandemic together. That concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for bringing us up to date on several matters here in the county and in your report. Thank you. At this time, we will move forward to our public comments. We have not actually had verbal public comments in our board members because it's very difficult, but we're going to try to get it done on tonight. We are asking that if you have any comments, that you would state your name, the district that you're from, and please, wait to be recognized. We don't want to make sure that we don't be crossing over one another. And it is a three-minute time limit. So at this time, we're going to be asking for public comments. It is now open to the public.
Hello. This is Diane Cheek.
Diane Cheek, you have been recognized. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, Diane Cheek, Sari District. Good evening, everyone. I would like to say I'm very pleased that citizens are permitted to provide comments during the meetings. The right to speak in public forums is a privilege which I greatly appreciate. It not only informs the board, but also others in the community about topics and issues that may be of concern to them too. Since this sitting board was established, there have been many challenges and changes. In order for the citizens to remain informed, questions have been sent to the administrator or to the board for response. Often, no response are provided. It isn't clear what the process is to receive a response on inquiries. Possibly, the delays are due to the county offices remaining closed. What is the plan to bring back to in-office operations tonight? We did hear that there are going to be appointments that can be made, so that's good news. But what is the process for actually responding to citizen inquiries? I think this needs to be published somewhere. In the last Board of Supervisors meeting, a presentation on the roof maintenance of the old courthouse was provided. It appeared that there is a need for routine maintenance of leaf removal to allow water to properly flow off the roof. In discussion, I believe the county administrator indicated she had received bids on tree removal. I hope this is not the case. To remove the beautiful trees from the town of Sari Square is a horrible approach to resolve a leaf removal issue. Please assure us all tonight that steps to remove the trees are not in progress and are not an option the county would ever pursue in place of routine maintenance. Also, after listening to the meeting tonight, I would like to say this is very good news on the grocery store as far as the grants are concerned. Hopefully, grants relieves the need for the county dollars to support this project. Also, as far as the broadband or whatever you want to call Mr. Doyle's fiber optics, the residents along Route 31 have not received any contact concerning the easement request on Route 31. Thank you for my time on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. Mike Eggleston.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Eggleston, you have been recognized.
Reverend Elliott, board members. The county provides board members with iPads, and you can send them multiple emails with one click with attachment. What I'd like to ask is, why do we have people voting on something at the last minute with no information when it takes about 30 seconds to send an email with attachments? This has happened multiple times. Tonight, your Sari supervisor asked for the financials. So why are we asking people to vote at the last minute on stuff that requires spending county money without sending the financial information to them? That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Mr. Elliott. Susan Corvello, Spring Grove.
Yes, Ms. Corvello, you've been recognized.
It's been a while since we've been able to verbally speak to you all, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to address our concerns. There's a couple items that are concerning me that I have heard through the county. First being, what is the status of the new EOC rescue building? There's been talk that there was a delay because kitchen, the beds, the sheet rock were not in the original plans and/or taken out of it. As I pass it, you can see where the sheet rock is halfway installed in the rooms. If this is true, can you advise why any place would not complete a building with putting sheet rock on the walls and then not putting a kitchen and beds in a rescue squad building that has people there for 24 hours a day? There's no reason to not understand that that should have been in the beginnings of this plan. Did we have to come up with more money to cover these items? That should have been in the original budget and plans. Just trying to clarify some rumors and talk that I've heard around town. The county states that they want to be transparent. However, I've sent an email out to the county administrator and the Board of Supervisors and did receive a phone call on my questions. However, I wanted to make sure that the information in the notes that I had taken were correct. So I sent out two more emails for clarification. I never received any kind of clarification from anyone. I'm going to assume that everything I wrote down is correct. And if somebody asks or talks about something, I can correct them if there's any false information that's going around town. After getting no response, it appears that there is no transparency. And should we, as citizens, expect to receive a response from our comments or our emails sent to the administrator and the Board of Supervisors? It appears that our comments have fallen onto deaf ears, since we do not get any responses. As for the county opening back up for in-person transactions and having Board of Supervisors meetings, what is the county looking for before doing so? I understand that we are going to be opening up for appointments only. Many of the large cities have already opened up in the city halls and having in-person meetings, of course, with social distance, face masks, sanitizers, and crowd control. Most of your businesses in Sari have been open the whole time. And I'm curious, since the county has all these safety features in the offices, what was going to be the criteria for opening back up, which we heard tonight? I'm all for safety, but I was just checking on what the requirements were before you opened. In-person voting is taking place, which I think is great. So there's people going in and out of the buildings, and you're able to social distance. I would expect the county to have employees to test negative before returning to work and infecting others if there are any cases in the county. Is this part of your protocol to check negative before you do respond back to work? And I'm not sure if I missed anything, but on the county administrator's minutes or speech, it had on there the proposal. And I don't know if I heard her speak anything about the proposal for the statute. I didn't get to look at the whole minutes and open up everything, so I did not hear her say anything on that. So I don't know what the proposals were that were received. And I know that was on the agenda, but I did not hear anything, and maybe I missed it. I thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Corvello. Are there any other public comments? If there be no other citizens for public comments, we do close this section of our meeting at this time. We do open up now for board comments. Are there any comments from board members? There are no comments from board members. We do have one item tonight for closed session. And we're going to ask now if our legal representative will come and give us the announcement for our closed session.
Ms. Elliott, can you hear me? This is Mr. Hefty.
Yes, Mr. Hefty, we can.
I have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia for the discussion of acquisition of public property for the purpose of possible economic development, where negotiation and where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the negotiating or bargaining position of the county.
Board members, it is your pleasure. On closed session item. You have a motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Then properly move into second. Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote on our closed session item to go into closed session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Board members, we will adjourn from, temporarily adjourn from this as we go into closed session.